Okay, we will call the September 9th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We have the roll call, please.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jeff Ron. Brandy Eber.
Here.
Daniel George.
Here.
Jim Winchester, Scott Polis, and Greg Striker excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? That has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or objections to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, minutes are approved. Any disclosures? Commissioner Eber?
I was absent from the, what meeting? August 8th meeting, so I'll abstain from the consent agenda.
I was also absent from the August 8th meeting, so I will abstain from the consent agenda, but I don't believe we have enough to even take the consent agenda up, so those disclosures don't go anywhere. Commissioner Krishna, anything to disclose?
No.
Commissioner Gardner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner George?
No disclosures.
As I said, we will move past the consent agenda. That'll be taken up at our next meeting. And we will move on to the public hearings. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is: One, after staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Two, persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules and procedures. A petitioners, including his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. Any party of interest wishing to appeal shall first file with the planning director within seven days of the commission's decision made on the record. A written notice of intent to appeal in accordance with AMC 2103050A4A. Commission recommendations to the Anchorage Assembly are not appealable. Following approval of written findings of fact and decision, any party of interest may, within 20 days, file an appeal by filing a notice of appeal and paying the appeal fee and deposit in accordance with 2103050. The notice of appeal must be filed with the planning director on a form prescribed by the municipality. If the appellant is not the applicant, the appellant's notice of appeal shall include proof of service on the applicant. Can we please have the staff presentation in case 2024-0087?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a conditional use application for a snow disposal site. This site is two tracks, one zone PLI and the other R2M. They are approximately 35 acres combined and do not contain any wetlands. Snow storage operations would take place during the winter months between September and April. This site was approved for and utilized as a temporary snow disposal site during the 2023-2024 winter season under MOA case 2024-0034. This site is also currently included in a conditional use for land reclamation under MOA case 2023-0030. During the 2022-2023 and 2023 and 2024 winter seasons, all available private snow disposal sites within the Anchorage Bowl reached capacity. Excessive amounts of snow stored in current sites may not thaw completely over the summer. This would further reduce the snow storage capacity for the upcoming winter season. Both the municipality of Anchorage and the state of Alaska Department of Transportation have seen the need for additional snow disposal sites within Anchorage and have opened additional sites for their use. These sites, however, are not available to private snow hauling contractors, creating a need for additional sites. The snow storage area on this site will be approximately 10 acres within the 35 acres, with a maximum height of 35 feet and will be set back 50 feet from the property lines. The snow storage area will not overlap with the filling operations of the land reclamation. As the land reclamation filling activities progress southerly, the snow storage area will shrink to prevent any overlap. A six-foot-high vegetated berm will be constructed to the west of the snow storage area. The remainder of the snow storage perimeter is already surrounded by a heavily vegetated slope of approximately 30 feet in height from the snow storage area to the property line. A detention basin already exists on site and has been determined by engineers to be sufficient for the proposed use. Braley Hydrologic consultants have established that the snow melt and surface runoff collected in this detention basin will not affect groundwater quality in adjacent or surrounding water aquifers. This project is located on tracks one and two, Poland Park subdivision. Track one is approximately 28.86 acres in size and is currently being used for land reclamation. Track two is approximately eight acres in size and is currently being used for land reclamation. Access to the site is gated. This site is currently accessed by an existing state of Alaska permitted driveway along Sand Lake Road with a paved 50-foot apron from the traveled right away. A pre-application conference was held on April 26th, 2024 in accordance with AMC 2103080C2. The community meetings were held with the Sand Lake Community Council on May 13th, 2024 and June 10th, 2024 in accordance with AMC 2103080C3. 262 public hearing notices were mailed on August 19th, 2024. As of this writing, two responses have been received from the public, one of them being the supplementary item handed to you tonight. The Sand Lake Community Council did not provide comments. Other agency comments, Parks and Recreation, Private Development, and Watershed Management all had comments regarding this snow disposal site. The other reviewing agencies had no objection. Their comments are attached and are found starting on page 47 of your staff packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission may approve a conditional use application if, in the judgment of the commission, all the following nine criteria have been met in all material matters. Planning staff has found that seven of the nine approval criteria have been met. Criteria number three has use-specific standards found in AMC 2105060E that may be met by providing the additional information required in conditions two through four, found on pages 11 and 12 of your staff packets. Criteria seven may be met, but at this time is an unknown impact. This site was used as a temporary snow storage site last winter. This has to do with noise, by the way, sorry, criteria seven. This site was used as a temporary snow storage site last winter with no known noise complaints. This criterion will be monitored and addressed if a complaint is filed. Therefore, staff finds that all nine criteria have or may be met and recommends approval subject to conditions one through seven, found on pages 11 and 12 of the staff packets. I can answer any questions that the commission may have, and the petitioner's representative and the petitioner are in attendance.
Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, we will invite the petitioner up for their presentation.
Good evening, Chairman member of this of the board. My name is Craig Bennett with S4 Group. And Triad Engineering is also here to help answer any civil-related questions the board may have tonight. And I want to thank staff for the help they've done on this case. They did an excellent job, and we appreciate their effort. I'll be brief. This should be a smooth and uncomplicated case. The CUP application is for a snow disposal site in West Anchorage. This site was approved for and used as a temporary snow disposal site last winter. There were no issues or complaints this past winter or spring, and it served the community well. We are in full agreement with staff on the recommendation of approval. We agree to all the department conditions. There are no objections from any of the state or municipal reviewing agencies. And we held two community meetings that were positive overall. And this is a perfect location for a snow disposal site. It is located on two main roads, Sand Lake Road and West Island Boulevard. There are no wetlands or streams. The drainage detention pond already is permitted under existing CUP. And Anchorage needs more snow sites. As shown during the last two winters, snow was being hauled out to Eagle River, which added significant trucking costs and traffic and time. And as stated in the staff report, for the last two years, all available private snow disposal sites reached capacity. Assembly had to allow a temporary emergency snow sites this past winter, and this site was one of them. And the CUP approval will help resolve the need for the assembly having to repeat that this winter. And in conclusion, both staff and I recommend approval of this case. West Anchorage needs a snow disposal site. With that said, I urge you to approve this CUP. And thank you for your time, and I can answer any questions now or wait to the rebuttal.
You have seven minutes and 56 seconds for rebuttal. I got a question from Commissioner Krishna.
Sure, two questions, actually.
Go ahead.
The first one is that, as I think I read in the packet, it's anticipated that this use is for approximately a decade, after which the land reclamation would be complete and this property would maybe be developed. Is that correct?
Yes, so the existing CUP is good, well, for the gravel site, is good until 2034. And at that time, we anticipate the fill site taking over this site and moving on to a residential. But it really depends on how much gravel comes in, how fast that fill site gets filled in. But as that gets filled in, this site gets smaller and smaller. So in 10 years, if it wasn't filled in with the fill site, they would have to come back and ask for an extension at that time. But likely, this is about a 10-year site.
All right, but there is no time limit on the conditional use for a snow disposal site. That use could continue indefinitely.
This is for 10 years. If we wanted to go longer, we'd have to come in for another extension. And typically, snow sites, I believe, do have timeframes assigned to them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hatcher?
Through the chair, Commissioner Krishna, number seven on the conditions on page 12. So that's one of the conditions, is that this will only operate for 10 years unless the existing land reclamation comes back in for an extension on their CUP. So it's tied to the land reclamation. So like you said, it's good for 10 years unless the 2023 case comes back in and they need a couple more years to finish up their land reclamation. Like Mr. Bennett said, if they don't fill it in 10 years, if there's still more time they need to fill, then this snow disposal site would be in conjunction with that. So it could be a couple of years after that, at most.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner George?
Thank you. Through the chair. This may be a question for the petitioner or for the department, not necessarily sure which. But just kind of curious, I'm reading through the packet about where the snow comes from. And in S4's response, it says it comes from around town. Does any of the snow potentially come from airport uses at all?
Through the chair, no, this is typically local snow-removing companies use local snow sites just because they don't want to truck, they want to go to the nearest snow site. And the airport has its own snow removals, own sites. So this wouldn't be coming from the airport. They have their own site, and they wouldn't want to truck it over here and pay for it.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. I just, I want to make sure that we establish a record where, you know, there's some concerns from folks that have written in about potential contamination of water sources. And I know that one that comes to mind is PFAS/POA,
Correct.
which is used in aviation firefighting and that kind of thing. And, you know, if any of the potential use of this site were to be from aviation uses, that would certainly be something we would want to know.
Correct. And that came up in the community meeting, and I tried to alleviate them of that concern, saying the airport keeps their own snow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Eber?
Thank you. Through the chair. I guess my question, I don't really know how to word this. I guess my concern is about the noise. So one of the comments we received tonight, number three, was the noise from the trucks. And then one of the comments in the community, you know, community meeting on June 11th said that they're going to be dumping snow every night. And then you go back to the packet where it says you're only allowed to be between 70 decibels and then 65 at night. So I guess, how do you reduce down to five decibels? And how do you handle the noise control, I guess?
Gotcha. Through the chair. Code has a noise ordinance assigned to snow dumps and what's allowed and when. And to alleviate that, that's one of the reasons for the berms that they require, berms and fencing. And this site is also in a low depression. So it's more than just, typically, we have three-to-six-foot-high berms. This has a wall with the bank of the dirt like 35 feet, so it's in the hole. And it was operated as a snow dump last winter and the spring, and there was no noise complaints all last year. But that's something that we definitely pay attention to.
Another one from Commissioner George.
Thank you. Through the chair. If I may follow up on my fellow commissioners' line of questioning. And one of the items mentioned by the individual who wrote in was a concern about the decelerating of the rigs coming in with the snow. And I can't recall what the speed limit is there as you approach the roundabout at Sand Lake and Diamond there. But I don't know if that part of Diamond has a prohibition of using Jake brakes or air brakes. As someone who lives along the Glen Highway where the speed drops down, kind of near Berga area, we routinely hear Jake brakes throughout the night, that kind of thing. And so I don't know if that's the sort of thing that would potentially be a concern. And maybe that's something we might have hoped to have seen from, you know, DOT's feedback in here. But anything that you might be able to offer about, you know, what the kind of speeds trucks are going to be coming in with snow, or maybe I don't know if the department has any thoughts about that. But I think that's probably what this individual is trying to get at, was the volume of vehicles and, you know, what that's going to be like for them.
Yeah, like I said, it was used as a snow site this past year, and there wasn't any complaints about noise this past winter and spring. And it was a heavy snow year. But we can also ask the trucks not to use their, with their engine brakes too, coming into the site. And we have done that before, just saying to truck drivers with the sign saying, please don't use your, you know, your engine brakes when you're coming in. And if there is community complaints, that's something we can also address at that time, too. Planning is on top of any complaints. They do a good job.
Through the chair, Commissioner George. So when it comes to planning's review, unfortunately, it doesn't take into account the roads. It's just property line to property line. So it's whatever's happening on the property. But like Mr. Bennett said, if that was one of the noise complaints, then that would be something that would come back to us, and we'd address it at that time.
Thank you very much, both of you. And I think that, you know, if the individual who wrote this letter, if they do have those kind of concerns in the future, that I would hope they would bring them to you. And ultimately, you know, if that's a mitigation measure that needs to be implemented, that option is something they could certainly request from you. So hopefully, they feel that they've been heard. Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna?
I'll just ask one more question. We have heard a couple of concerns or comments in our packet about water quality for wells. Could you just directly speak to that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So there was a Braley letter. Actually, I can give a handout if you want a copy of the Braley letter. And it was a hydrology study, and it shows that this aquifer flows to the northwest. There is a well about 1,300 feet to the south. And per code, we need to be, it's a community well, we need to be 1,000 feet from that. And we're 1,300 feet from it, so we're over the distance, and it's a different aquifer. So I know there was concern that this detention pond would affect the bluff. But the water from this detention pond flows north, not south. Different aquifers, different levels, different waters. And this detention pond has been there for a long time, since the 60s, I think, without affecting any of the wells in the area. And it's been monitored for at least 10 years with monitoring wells, showing, we have pretty good data showing how it affects the neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How long was the site operating last winter?
Yeah, I think just over three months.
So when would that make it start operating, I guess?
I'm being told February, March.
Thank you. I see no further questions. You have seven minutes and 56 seconds for rebuttal.
All right, thank you.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come forward. You got to touch the button down below to get the red light.
Okay, my name is Dr. Jessica Cherry, and I'm a hydrologist for the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration and the senior climate official for Alaska, for NOAA. And I also live at this intersection of Diamond and Sand Lake and have worked at the National Weather Service facility there on Sand Lake. And I will disagree with the hydrologic study. It sounds like it was done by my colleague, Dave Braley. I am concerned that this becoming a massive snow dump would, especially because it's been excavated, it's not the natural groundwater situation there that because of the confined layer of soil below the excavation is causing water to move laterally, not just to the north, but throughout the area, as more and more water would get piled up in that hole, basically. And we've had a lot of issues with bluff stability in along Turnigan Arm, the loss of properties and homes, and people having to put in expensive retaining walls. We've seen the same thing at Point Ronzoff, where there was significant property damage last spring and the spring before. And so I think a huge snow dump in this area is a pretty bad idea. And I share the concerns with the PFAS contamination. PFAS is not just at the airport, it's in all of our roadways. It's in many of the materials used to run automobiles and trucks, and it's everywhere. So I have concerns for my well that I drank out of and for the erosion. Not just will that potentially lead to slow blowouts on the bluff, but saturated soil during an earthquake also contributes to additional property loss. So those are my concerns, speaking on behalf of the Seacliff Condo Association. Thanks.
Questions? Question from Commissioner Krishna?
Yes, if you'll give us a few more minutes of your time. You know, I won't speak for my fellow commissioners. I think we're maybe not the group to evaluate the merits of a hydrological study. But maybe my question for you that might help us move forward is, given that the site has already operated as a snow dump, are there any guardrails or conditions or site design features that you feel might help us get to a solution that is both adequate for community concerns and allows us to fulfill this important public service that we're trying to get to here?
Well, I haven't seen the, like, the volume estimate of what was deposited this past winter. Obviously, extreme precipitation and what to do with the snow is a huge challenge for Anchorage. But I think that any volume, depending on the conditions, could lead to just further soil saturation. Our property that has been there for 50 years, the Seacliff Condo Association, has a lot of undulating soil that is probably being caused by additional water flowing. There's a stream that comes out the bluff, and there's kind of an old dilapidated conduit that moves some of that water. But those properties are literally right on the bluff. They're multifamily homes. There are other fancy homes all over the bluff that would be vulnerable to the same situation. But I don't see how a company that wasn't dumping all this snow there wouldn't be partially liable for property loss along that bluff if that did happen.
Thank you.
I have a question. Did you guys test your well this summer to see if there was any effect by the snow dumping last year?
I have recommended that we start testing for PFAS. But again, I don't know the total volume that was deposited this winter or whether it was a significant amount. Just visually, it didn't look like there was very much snow there this winter compared to some of the huge snow dumps you see around town that are still melting. So I think we should do water testing monthly, really.
But you don't know that you actually did any testing of your well?
I know there has not been testing of PFAS in our community well.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? I see no more questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to testify? We'll take your rebuttal.
Yeah, thank you, Craig, with S4. And thank you for coming out and speaking. It's always good to have the community come out. I did speak with Dave Braley, the hydrologic consultant, on the phone today for quite a while about this. And he says he's been testing it there for the past 10 years. And he says the water flows northwest pretty easily. And he says, no water's going south at all. And that this site, all the drainage from DOT, from the two roads, comes to the site, and it's been that way for an extended amount of time. And Jade Park drains to this drainage basin. So it's been, everything in the area, I guess, drains this direction, and it's been that way for quite a while. And through testing, there hasn't been any, I guess, negative effects, especially not to the south. So does the board have any questions for me about that?
Commissioner George?
Hey, I just, thank you. I wanted to take you up on your offer to receive a copy of the Braley letter since it was mentioned in the packet. I don't think I had a chance to review that. And that was my only request, is just to have that be part of the public record. So thank you.
And page four of it, I believe, shows a map with the direction of the flow. Sorry, page three. This report was looking at also the Lucy Pit up to the northwest, and that flows down to the south. And this site here flows up to the northwest.
And I can have Brandon with Triad Engineering speak to it a little bit more also.
Yeah, this is Brandon Marcot, M-A-R-C-O-T-T, with Triad Engineering. I just wanted to add that, as Craig mentioned, that this site has been I just wanted to add that, as Craig mentioned, that this site has been basically a hole for better part of 40 years plus, collecting a lot of surface runoff and storm runoff. And in 2018, we had quite a, an earthquake event. And, you know, to speak to the questions about water saturation in the area, to my knowledge, no issues occurred with West Diamond Boulevard or any of the, the neighboring lots in the area as far as utilities go, as far as structural foundations goes. So when I think of, you know, water saturation affecting neighboring properties, an earthquake of that magnitude would exacerbate that and bring that to the surface and identify some issues there. So I don't know that this project can be directly correlated with slope failures due to the bluff. That, that area of Anchorage is already in a higher seismic zone than we are. It is directly on the bluff. So it's more susceptible to erosive forces and seismic forces.
I don't see any other questions, but I have one last question. Can we get a feel for how much snow was there last year versus how much would potentially be there in a full year of operation? I, I mean, I guess I'm looking for rough percentages, knowing that you can't actually probably give me a real number or an exact number.
Sure. My name is Ryan Zins. I'm Vice President and General Manager, Frank Gerson of Gravel. And I'm sorry, Director Spennelli, I don't have that information in front of me. But given the events, the snow events, we don't anticipate this site operating 24 hours at the beginning of the season. It's really, our initial plans right now is depending on snow loads, is if we start seeing significant snow events in the season, that's when we'll really start gearing towards that area. It's really looking at it as an emergency type use. Our, our plans currently are if we see another event like last year or previous years, we wouldn't open until later in the season anyways. Right now, we don't have staff geared up for that. We just want to have that as an option. So to answer your question a roundabout way, I would expect if it was the same snow events, similar to last year, maybe up 20%, 30%, but not, not drastically increases our initial plans right now.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. What is the will of the body?
Not a motion.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yeah, I've got a question for staff. It's with respect to condition of approval number two, with Private Development Watershed Management Services divisions. And I guess it references confirming that it's designed in accordance with the Design Criteria Manual for Snow Storage Requirements and identifies the Bradley Letter and Groundwater Monitoring Report. And I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit to what that process actually looks like in relation to the concerns that were raised today? And if there's an opportunity or maybe in the course of that, if Watershed Management would, I don't know what, I guess what all information they would be looking at and if, if they have any exposure to the specific concerns that we heard today?
Through the chair, Commissioner Gardner. So the Bradley Letter that you got, the seven page, there was also a 70-page document that was not included in the application and Watershed Management and Private Development were specifically looking for that. Any snow storage disposal site has to meet the criteria of stormwater. So they, Brandon, I'm sure Triad's going to provide that, they typically do. So they'll have to provide that to Watershed Management. Watershed Management will have to sign off on that, that they agree that that, it meets the criteria of what's required prior to getting approval of their conditional use.
And do those criteria involve any elements that, I assume they, they would in some fashion that relate to potential impacts on adjacent wells?
Correct, they do. They, they take into account perk rates and what, how much water's going to be, how much water they have to maintain on site. Typically, this site's a little different. Typically, most sites have to retain so much water on property prior to it entering the storm system, the stormwater system. This site won't ever have water entering the stormwater system. So they've taken that equation, that part of it out of the equation. So yeah, so it's basically based on the report they have for hydrology, making sure that's accurate. And then what their perk, what their perk test, it's in there in the comments from both Private Development and Watershed, that there was no perk tests included. And part of it's because they just didn't include the, the report, that, part of the report that you've, that you're seeing. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you to the chair. Question for staff. What triggers a review or referral or consideration by a geotechnical advisory commission or staff? You know, this is an unusual site we have that's been previously excavated. And we're talking about hydrology here. None of us are experts in that sort of thing. And that seems to be a concern that has come up. So has staff looked at this from a geotechnical perspective, assuming that there's that type of expertise within the department? Thank you.
Through the commissioner, Commissioner George, through the chairman. No, we have not looked at it as geotechnical and it has not gone before the Geotech Advisory. Like Mr. Marcot was saying, this is a seismic zone three, this, and Mr. Bennett was saying, this site has been a hole, basically for 40 years, collecting basically all the rainwater and runoff from all the adjacent properties to date without any known, any currently known impacts to any of the wells. The majority of the sites around here are served by water and sewer from AWU, mostly West Park across the, across from Sand Lake. That's completely all public wa, public water, public sewer. So the impacts there are minimal in that direction. The, the one person that testified, Sea Cliff is one of the wells. There are a couple wells to the south. But no, nothing, and like Mr. Marcot said, with the 2018 earthquake, as far as I can tell from my layman's, nothing has happened to Diamond. You know, nothing happened in the 2018 earthquake that would, would negate that. That could be something you could put a condition on, I guess. You could add that as something that they would have to, to show. I don't know why, per se, you would do that. I mean, you could, but it's, it might be more than what is normally required for a snow storage area. Most snow storage areas like you've seen around town still have a little bit of snow left in them. You know, they pile them 50, 60 feet high and, and they're just, you know, surface draining. Granted, they do go into a storm drain system and they influx into that, creating more, more saturation of soils in those areas than this site, which has probably got a pretty thick clay layer than, and why it's collecting it now. I hope that helped, that helped or no? Okay.
Piggybacking on that, can you just verify that there, there's an actual permit of some sort that goes along with this? Or I, I guess I'm under the impression that we're here tonight to approve a conditional use for the zoning, but as far as fills and grades and water issues, is there another permit that goes along with this or is this it?
Mr. Chair, the stormwater, what they have to do for watershed, that is it. And it, we're not, you're actually not reviewing it for zoning, per se. PLI and R2M require a conditional use for a snow disposal site, whereas an industrial zone property is just a permitted use.
I, I guess I was clarifying for my other commissioners that we, we are not in charge of deciding whether this is okay for the water.
Correct, that would be up to Watershed Management.
The, yeah, we're, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that was what I meant by that.
There you go. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Oh, the speed limits, I did look that up. Sand Lake is 50 miles an hour and West Diamond is 45 coming up to that bulb. And it doesn't look like there's any, it doesn't, from what I could see on Google imaging, there didn't seem like any reduction with the roundabout. But that is a roundabout and they usually slow down, they have to slow down quite a bit for that roundabout.
Commissioner Krishna, would you like to state your motion?
Yes, and I hope I didn't cut off any commissioners who had additional questions for staff. I move in case 2024-0087 to approve a conditional use for a snow disposal site, subject to the conditions shown on pages 11 and 12 of the staff report.
That is seconded by Commissioner Eber. Commissioner Krishna, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I intend to support this motion. I appreciate the questions that were asked in the last few minutes. I will admit that I am, am not a hydrologist and, and can't necessarily resolve the questions that were brought here today, but I do feel comfortable that, as was stated, that isn't necessarily, this isn't necessarily the last step in the process and Watershed Management will conduct some additional review. And it seems like they are the right entity to do so. So knowing that, knowing that there's a large need, as demonstrated by the site already having been put in use last year and with no complaints being recorded for the duration of that use, I feel comfortable with this conditional use.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Commissioner Eber.
I'll just add that all the criteria met or may have been met and that the petitioner has agreed to all of the conditions of approval as well.
I will add that I also intend to support the motion and the fact that approximately 40 to 50 homes across the street from this site, closer to the community well, are all on septic systems, somewhat alleviates my concern about this site contaminating the aquifer or any of the bluff erosion concerns that were brought up. I, I just think those septic systems might be doing as much or more damage, if, if any damage was occurring. So I guess we will call for the question.
Mr. Ron, how do you vote?
Yeah.
That motion passes. With that, we will move on to any commissioner comments before we move to adjourn. Seeing and hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Eber, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron.